The cemetery.
Believe those sections referenced by Mr. Chapsis are new sections for this project? The private landscaping.
So we have these color codes, but these aren't what I think it is. That's safe for sure without the dog going.
There's no.
Do you remember? Oh, were those sections reference new sections that were added?
Both of them are referenced under eight dash two dash six.
Making the concrete size flush with the ground. That was a new addition, right?
Yeah.
Okay. As well as the private landscaping.
Yeah.
Those are both new additions.
Any other public discussion during this hearing? Hearing is saved now. We will close the public hearing and move back to item eight. Discussion possible action items pertaining to the public hearing. Councilman Flankis, discussion for possible action. Approval of second reading of ordinance seven four one, bill twenty twenty one dash zero four, amending chapter two of title eight entitled Public Ways and Property. Cemetery of the city, code of the city of Ely, replacing chapter two in its entirety and specifically updating operating hours, use of vehicles, headstones, and decorations of grave sites. I will entertain a motion on this item.
Counselor, you.
We have a motion from Councilman Flankis. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have further discussion or questions? Hearing is saved now. We'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. We will move down to B new business. I guess I've forgotten something. It doesn't look like they have, so we're willing to be new business. Item one, Mayor Robertson, Councilman Hallworth, discussion for possible action. Acceptance of Porter Government and Business Solutions proposal to promote city Ely interests in the United States Congress and a battle legislature for monthly cost of four thousand dollars with March fifteenth, twenty twenty one, and March thirty third, with March fifteenth, twenty twenty one to March thirty first, twenty twenty one fee to be prorated. I do think we have some members of the Porter Group on our Zoom call tonight. For any questions on this, you have their proposal here. I know Councilman Hallworth has been working on this, but this may be relatively new information to some of the council members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just start off with our current administration in Washington. Our country, as we all know, is in dire straits. We need to get things rolling up in the blue real fast. I believe that was so important to have people walking up down the halls of the Capitol, talking, visiting, meeting senators, congressmen, to discuss, push our wishes and hopes for our community out here. If we don't have somebody walking up down the aisles, it's not going to happen. The last time we called an earmark or port back in the former Senator Harry Reid's day, the city Fallon hired Porter Group to do it, and they benefit in the tens of millions of dollars in their efforts on this here. And I personally talked with the mayor of Fallon, Mayor Pittford, and he strongly supports this, especially during this time right now with their new administration. They're trying to boost the economy in the country. And we know there's already talk going on, and this is our chance right now. If we don't have somebody in Washington, which we don't, we're going to stand a big chance of losing some real money. This group has really helped the railroad, has helped in our community, and it's a lot of money, four thousand dollars a month, but the offset could be unbelievable. And we need to have this push right now, a voice for the city of Ely in Washington.
I would just voice my support of what Councilman Hallworth has said. I mean, there is money coming out. We want to make sure that we're getting our, the share that we can for the community. It seems like they've gotten a lot of good results based on Councilman Hallworth's research and the information they've provided here. I would also like to point out that on the terms here, it's for one year, but it can be canceled upon thirty days' notice. If that's something the council chooses or decides they get what they need from them or they don't.
Is there a representative from Porter Group online to be able to tell us how often we give us updates?
Yes, Bob Herbert is on the line as well as Cameron Gresh.
Mr. Herbert, could you unmute yourself and address that question?
I have. I didn't know if I could hear the question on the level. Can you please repeat it one more time?
The question I have, Bob, is, this is Jim Hallworth, Councilman, is what we provided, the council in some form, we provided a report of contacts made, people you talked to, what we're trying to achieve. I know we have a list, you know, that the city clerk has compiled on projects we'd like to see funded. I just want to know if we'll be getting on some kind of regular basis, you know, call City Hall, you know, person says to listen to get something in writing. Thank you.
Yeah, so our normal strategy on that is to have at least a, you know, at this point, because it's really busy, we should probably have weekly calls and talk about what's going on and keep the city updated. The other point here is that we also produce a monthly report that will come to the city that will articulate all the work that we've been doing in Washington on behalf of the city. Does that help address that question?
Yes.
And if I have a microphone here, I've just got a couple of things, if you gentlemen don't mind.
We have five minutes for that.
Yep, just real quick, you know, as you know, the president signed the American Rescue Act, our plan today. So that fund, all those funds will be starting to be released immediately. That's something we need to get focused on and make sure we funnel that to the city. As you talked about already, there's a return of earmarks, which is really important. That's why we need to get to work and start submitting any kind of requests that you may have that we can work with the delegation. We would put together the applications for the earmark. We would submit that. Then we would set up Zoom meetings with the staff or the members of Congress. You know, this case, of course, would be Congressman Horstberg and our two senators. So that's something else we can do. The other thing I wanted to highlight that has happened since you received our proposal is that we now have a grant writer that can be supportive. I understand small communities like yours struggle to have, you know, the manpower, if you will, to put together these, you know, grants, which have become very competitive. So we have somebody now that can help write or fine tune it as necessary to help you be as successful as possible. And finally, if the council and the mayor decide to bring us on board, I can assure you, as soon as COVID goes away, we'll be up there. Up in the Ely several times in Nevada, and let them come up and visit with you and look at what we can do personally, up close and personal in the city, so they can bring that back and work on that Washington way. So I just, real quick, just want to throw out those few things.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Any questions from council members?
I just have one additional comment, Mr. Mayor. When I had the conversation with Mayor Pittford, he did mention what Bob just said. They're Nevadans, so they have our back. You know, they, they won't see Nevada prosper, especially in smaller communities. So I just wanted to relay that extra push right there. Thank you.
Where do we get the four thousand dollars? Where do we get the forty nine thousand change, maybe a hundred fifty?
It would be budgeted in the next year's budget. And if we start this year, it would be a four-way split between the general fund and the three enterprise funds.
Isn't this considered lobbying?
Yes.
We've got to put that on our budget. Do you even put it, ever in right now?
In, it would be.
Twenty twenty?
Well, when I submit the budget, there is this specific page that's a part of the budget that I have to give the state.
But the one we're working in right now, it expires, and we didn't put this into that budget.
I would have to check into that because this is something we've never done before, so I don't have that knowledge.
I probably recommend it's going to be an authentication, the definition of automatic expense.
Yes. Yes, I would always identify it as that expense. And the financials, if that's what you mean, or are you talking about? As far as our budget this year doesn't have a lobbying budget in it. I would have to check with the state if we would have to wait until the next year to be able to start it.
I think there's going to be a way to get around that. I think we need to be aware of that.
Oh, I'm aware of that. It's part of my budget worksheet every year.
That's a good four thousand dollars worth. That's an awful lot of money, but the ROI, I'm always concerned about this kind of stuff.
Well, in my, in my opinion, I mean, the ROI, just like Mayor Pittford said, there's, for that amount of expense to get some of our infrastructure projects funded, principally getting the rest of this Endot project funding so that we can finish off our downtown and the rest of that state project, whether or not the state has funding, making sure that they get some of that done, I think is a, would be a big, big benefit to the community in addition to other things that you could identify as the council.
Well, I'm looking at the fact that forty eight thousand dollars has been spent committing out of the different projects within the community. But on the other hand, getting national attention and getting national funds, I agree with. I look at our community, we've had, made City of America here for two years, and it's seen nothing being accomplished. Really, the lost way, lost way to display for all the time. The legislature right now, and especially our government, so so I could be questioning this concept of a community development like this one that's trying to get into story economy. They purchased sixteen thousand acres to build a town and put their manufacturing facility, which is electronics, right in the town. But they would not be governed by state or county. They were governed, governed themselves. And the governor is pushing this concept, which reminds me of what McHale Ruth used to be, company towns, but that was a different kind of concept back in the company town. And I'm just wondering, spending four thousand dollars a month, forty eight thousand dollars a year, what kind of accomplice was required to run that money instead? And what's coming down with these tech concerns, leaving California like crazy? My personal opinion, we need somebody in Carson City. We have some of these people over here who said everything going to Las Vegas. And if they don't like it, they forget about it. They won't question it without reading on their own, start getting the tech companies going into Reno. We haven't made any type of investment in our kind of order. And I think this kind of, I know again, since I read this earlier and thought about it, thought about it, thought about it. If we're well afforded, I'm in favor of it. But I'd also like to see representation from Ely and White County in Carson City because they don't know we exist.
Well, that is one of the benefits of this is that they're there in Carson City and Washington doing these things. That's why we hired them, is that how I did it.
One of the last, you probably recall, it's already been probably in the late nineties, the city was the recipient of a lot of this pork money. The land, the sewer plant, they put in the ponds. It cost us nothing. The solar behind the fire station was put in for electricity. And unfortunately, the top of the building, the heat for the, you know, for heating water, still, you know, that's a problem to discontinue. That never cost the taxpayer nothing, you know. So this funding's out there. And heaven forbid, if Robinson, this is my opinion, if Robinson was to shut down, what's that going to do to our tax basis in this community? There's a chance that we could get money to finish the downtown street project. It's federal money telling the state, you have got to finish this project, not us telling the state. It's the federal government who would fund that continuation of the downtown project up to the main intersection. You know, the, I guess the sky's the limit. But in Carson City, does not have the stroke you're talking about. They don't. You know, we're Western Utah, basically. But in Washington, that's where the money's going to be handed out at. And that's where the money got handed out back in the nineties on the sewer plant and the improvements to the fire station cost the city nothing. And they hired a lot of people to do that, pay for everything.
Well, how many of your representatives that are back in Washington right now have even come to this part of the state?
But that part I don't know.
Well, and once again, I mean, that's the point of hiring these people who already have the relationships, who can lobby on our behalf to these people who haven't been here.
What?
That's, that's the, that's the idea.
Is there a time that we can set to see if we're being recognized and knowledge, having knowledge of anything going our way? If we go with this, do we, are we going to have monthly reports or something?
He said yes. They will be providing the council a monthly report and a weekly meeting with some staff members.
I'm very much in favor of progress because I thought we should meet around there.
Sure.
I'd be willing to go along with it all. I hope to see something with it.
Would you be willing to make a motion to that?
Would I be willing to make a motion? I'd like to hear some more conversation.
Okay. Is there any further discussion from the council on this?
I'd just like to add that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that there is an out clause in this, but do, no, it takes thirty days, you know. So, once again, I welcome any of the call. Mayor Pittford, you're a small town, they went through it, and I don't have the, there's like seven entities in this, in the state that they represent. Carson City, I think it was the Truckee Meadows, I'm sure Bob could tell us who they are. And I just picked on Fallon because it's a similar sized town as Ely. And it was, it was unbelievable. Again, I'm going, talking right to the man that really promotes them. So Bob might be able to throw out the other name, the other entity down on Carson City.
Well, they've been able to get quite a bit of money for the railroad.
And then the railroad, the railroad train, that's a.
Even if we spend the fifty thousand dollars, if you get five hundred thousand dollars in projects back to your community, that's, you spent ten percent to get half a million dollars. And hopefully, there's a lot more money than that.
I agree with the contact and everything else, but, you know, being, when originally we discussed the fact that we cut wages on our employees, but we've never paid back the raises that were cut down or spent a good kind of money for something else. I'm more interested in working this community and hoping that we can be successful and get something done. Now, if this is going to help, I'm all in favor of it. But I'd like, well, it's, this is something that's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take years or.
Duly noted. Is there, is there further discussion or motion anyone would like to make on this?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to, I guess, contract with Porter Government Business Solutions Group to be our lobbyist in the United States Congress in Nevada Legislature for a monthly cost of four thousand dollars with a month of marketing prorated, with noting that there is a thirty day out clause.
We have a motion. Do we have a second on this?
I'll second.
We have a second from Councilman Carson. Further discussion or any other questions?
If the council don't mind, I'll even take the point of sitting, listening to his calls. Because I know the staff is overly busy. I just have to have a room to sit in when they call. My speaker, no, I'm like a computer.
You're more than welcome to use the office upstairs. I'm happy to have as well. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilman Carson. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. We move on to item two. Councilman Hallworth, discussion for possible action. Review and possible approval of the city's list of priorities, prioritized interests to submit to Porter Government and Business Solutions. You have a draft in your packet here of some items. I think Councilman Hallworth came up with with staff, I reviewed one.
I think this list was discussed, you know, with the city clerk Lee and BJ Hanzin put on that right there. So, once again, you know, that last one, number three, two thousand ten, Ring of Water and Sewer Plant, he's written a report, that's huge, you know. I mean, we could go page after page after page on that. But that, what it is, page after page. So to prioritize, we have to do it quickly because the money's flowing one point nine trillion dollars. We need to get help on this here. So the first one is the Endot project. That's ours, where we felt it was a quick group to get that done. Again, it's federal money being handed down to the state as that happens. The state has to do it because it's coming from the federal government. So that's a big push there. Round nineteen, Rodbet Park redesign and P E R report for, for our city.
Are there any additions any of the councilmen would like to see on that? Or would you like a motion for exception on that?
And I'm sure the additions would be added as we do.
I think so. We could probably have that in a review then. I'm happy to get a base here.
I know that we need to move very quick on this, but yeah. I know we need to get moved very quick on this, but that number three, I'm trying to sit, but maybe because, several years ago, I gave Councilman Flankis a copy of the stuff. We're having real issues with the water down at the golf course. And I think it's going to be a solution to that by having some good stuff for down there where they're uncomfortable, whatever. That is really a vital entity, I guess you will, for the community for future growth. I mean, businesses, like business professionals, when they're managing, need certain things and, you know, they're, of course, they're teenagers, offensive stuff they look at and they bring people in. And I just, I'd like to see, I don't know what that infrastructure was, if that's doing some of the water usage down there on the Green Gym.
I don't know about that, Jennifer or BJ.
I guess, I'm there here for my county. Did I get that copy? Did you, you still have that copy?
I have the copy, yes.
Because Chipman's hearing was done way long time ago. Is it possible we could get some water that's going to nowhere into that golf course? But this type of.
Grant funding?
I believe that water goes down to service or lessees on the Georgetown ranch.
That's right. That's, that's a problem because we, me and Kurt had this conversation about what we could possibly do with this runoff water through here. And that was the discussion we were having. Can you get that water and get it to the golf course or something else over there? And what we came down to is it goes to our D C at the ranch. We actually use that water.
That's all they're using for water. He never had it before.
He never had it before, but it's still a lot of water that's coming through there. So that's where it basically ends up going to D C.
What were some of the other things on this list? I know we discussed some of the things like the sewer plant upgrades that are needed and.
And the list is, that P E R, I believe it was like thirty million dollars worth of improvements were needed in our water infrastructure, thirty million in our sewer infrastructure. It was just a big, long list. And even though, and I expressed to them when we were talking about this, that this may be a few years old, the amount and the scope of these projects are so large that even in the years since then, that list is still just as big. There's no way that we.
Nothing fixed itself in the last twenty years, no?
Well, the P E R's not twenty years old. It, but in the, in the last ten years, that P E R, you know, we've done local projects, but we still have not done thirty million dollars worth of those projects, for sure.
Well, I totally support BJ, that's my point here. But I, downtown, definitely prioritize, I just like that water to sewer water because we are in trouble all the way through our N P. Right now, we're getting a little boost with what's going on.
For sure.
That's number three on our priority. And I just think it needs to be a little higher. I don't know if that's.
Well, if there are any other questions at the moment, I'll entertain a motion so we can have discussion on this further.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Item three, Councilman Hallworth, White County Tourism Director Kyle Horvath, discussion for possible action. Approval of support letters for Forest Service, Ely District Proposal for the Ward Mountain Trail System Expansion.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you. Thank you for taking time to consider my request for a letter of support. The Ward Mountain Trail System is the trail system that includes Ice Plant Canyon all the way up to the campgrounds. It is the one that links directly into the downtown. It is used for events like Fears, Tears, and Beers. It's used by Ely outdoor enthusiasts for their events. It's also used by the middle school and high school mountain bike team. It's one of their main practice areas. It has great benefit to the local community in addition to being one of our main trail systems for mountain biking as a tourism asset. And I don't know if you guys saw the video that came out today that we released from Beta M T B, but another great video that went out nationally promoting the trail system in Ely. So that, that push to develop the outdoor recreation, especially through mountain biking, it's working. This Ward Mountain Trail Expansion proposal started ten years ago with Great Basin Trails Alliance working with Forest Service to develop a thirty to fifty mile expansion plan. Trail expansion takes ten years to get to the point to where your proposal is ready for submission. And they submitted that proposal around seventeen of Snipelmo where it was not recommended for funding, and they also recommended it, resubmitted it in round eighteen, where recently we found out that it is also, again, not recommended for funding. This is a major economic development project. This isn't a fun and games project. Trails bring in massive benefits to community, both financially and physically. And this is a community that appreciates its recreation and its outdoors. So we have a forty-five day public comment period before B L M, Department of Interior, makes their final recommendations. And what I'm asking for is a letter of support from the city recognizing that this trail system directly is in relation to downtown Ely's success. We've been working on making downtown Ely a trailhead for all recreation. And this, this trail system not only would cause excitement outside of the community, within the community, but it would bring people right to the businesses in the downtown. So submitted in your packet, I believe, Jennifer, was some draft letters that I wrote, kind of moving in the direction of how I'm going to try to convince with my voice our elected officials to pull this project up from not being recommended to being considered for funding. And so all I'm asking from the city is recognition of the importance of this project and your support in making public comment or reaching out to our elected officials, letting them know how important this is to the success of downtown Ely and citizens.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you for your support.
Letter sent. I wrote some nice letters there. And I inform Councilman Hallworth, White County Tourism Director Kyle Horvath, discussion for possible action, approval of support letter for Trails Alliance Building Course to be located in White County, Nevada.
All right, now unfortunately, we weren't able. So unfortunately, I wasn't able to get any material to give you a heads up on what this was about. So allow me a little bit of time to kind of explain what this project is. The trail expansion on Ward Mountain is part of what kind of facilitated this idea. The twenty miles of trail expansion that the International Mountain Bike Association is working on at Garnet Hill is part of another project, is part of this trail expansion plan. Our goal is to have a hundred miles of single track, which would be suitable for mountain biking, hiking, horseback, that would all be accessible from downtown Ely. That is, that's a major feather in the cap of any community that boasts outdoor recreation. The problem is, is that we don't have enough people moving dirt to build these trails that are being approved in my lifetime. And so a lot of this, these proposals include hiring trail crews. And there's about five trail crews in the state of Nevada that are licensed to build these trails. Well, Ely's not the only community that is putting their, their effort into expanding their outdoor recreation to try to support their economy. So all of these trail crews are backlogged for all of their projects around the state. And so what this trail building university is, is kind of addressing the same thing that, that communities all across the country are dealing with, and that is a lack of qualified trail builders to hire. And that's the thing is, is trail builders, just regular trail building laborers start at twenty dollars an hour to go out and move dirt and build these trails. And if you're operating heavy machinery, it goes all the way up to heavy machinery operator's license. So what we want to do is, is we kind of want to, what we want to develop a regionally significant trail building university out of Ely, Nevada, where our mountains are a classroom for people from all over the West to come and learn. and learn how to properly build trail, get their Sawyer certifications, which is, which is kind of a a big deal to get, and opens up a lot of uh employment opportunities with Forest Service and other crews to get their heavy machinery operator's license, which opens up other opportunities to get their wilderness version.